Okay, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to have a motion to accept last week's or last month's meeting minutes.
Excuse me, Ron, can we call the meetings over?
Oh, okay. Sorry, call the meetings over.
Thank you.
All right. And I'd like to hear a motion to accept the meeting minutes from last month.
I make a motion to accept it.
Motion.
Second.
And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. The Board to approve and adopt the December 21st, 2021, and the January 18th meeting minutes. All right, if you did not, public hearings. All right. All right, this is the application for McGrath Terrace. Applicant, ZB 22001, David Coran is the applicant. Tax parcel 6356-03-108498, 53 McGrath Terrace, zoning district R40 and it's 2.1 acres. The applicant is seeking the following area variances for purpose of construction. A 22 by, uh, 22 feet, 6 inch by 38 foot attached garage with a bonus room and storage above. A front right side variance of 14 feet, 1 inch where 25 feet is the minimum setback requirement. Said variance would result in a 10 feet, 11 inch front right side setback. The rear right side variance of 18 feet, 9 inches where 25 foot is the minimum setback requirement. Said variance would result in a rear side setback of 6 feet, 3 inches. Said request are in violation of fiscal code 150-37B and the schedule of regulations for residential districts. Uh, we received, let's see. We received a couple of emails here, and one of them with pictures dated February 8th, 2022, from Charles and Peggy Tierney.
Hold on. First of all, we want to make sure that we have a public hearing opened before we start putting things into the public hearing.
Oh, I saw the public hearing and then I read.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Okay.
What we want to do is, first of all, are all the posings and mailings proof of, uh, proof of all proper publication is all in? And if so, then you can entertain a motion to open the public hearing on this matter.
All right, okay, okay. So we have all the, all the correspondents in?
That's correct.
Okay, so we have a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
So first thing you should do is have they call the applicant up and let the applicant make a presentation to the Board and to the public as to what they're trying to do and explain the application.
Okay.
And then, uh, in regard to communications or emails, I know the Board received some communications and emails from some neighbors. You can, uh, put those into the record, read those into the record, and hear from the public as well.
Okay. Excuse me, folks, I'm kinda new at this, so. Okay, Mr. Coran, can you come up and present your, uh, application, please?
Hi, my name's David Coran. What I'm looking to do is, uh, I'm proposing a garage addition to the side of my house there. That's a new survey that I had done, that I believe the attorney was looking for some more information. And that is up to date as of, uh, January. Essentially, what I'm trying to do is put that, uh, extension on the house, and I'm looking for a variance on that triangular piece of property that the Tierneys own. Um, and that's where the area variance is coming into play. So that's what the application is all about. And I would also like to address, if I may, uh, the letter that you're talking about that the Tierneys sent into the Board. So we have the, uh...
Why don't we first read that into the records, everybody knows, before you address it, so members of the public know what it is?
Sure.
You know, I think there was more than one email, I think that came, right?
We have two emails here. The first is from, uh, Ms. Peggy Tierney. "To whom it may concern our neighbor David Coran, 53 McGrath Terrace Fishkill is asking for a variance of zoning to construct a 22-foot, 6-inch by 38-foot attached garage and bonus room with storage above. Our property 5 McGrath Terrace Extension is abutting the property in which Mr. Coran is seeking the variance. With respect to everyone involved, we are asking the granting of this variance, which would place a new structure just 6 feet from our property line. We are against granting, the granting of this variance. We were at the meeting of Mr. Coran's appeal, in which the zoning board was all but set to grant this variance based on Mr. Coran stating our piece of property where he is seeking the variance was wasted space, and our house is set way back, set way in the back, so that this new structure would not be in interference. We have lived at this address and have paid property taxes on this parcel for 28 years, over 28 years. We value our land, take care of it, and do not consider ever any of it wasted space. And because someone feels that another's property is wasted space, does not give grounds for the granting of a variance. Zoning laws are put in effect for a reason, and if you give an inch or mile, may be taken. Besides occurring zoning laws, consideration should also be considered through the following. Leader drains of Mr. Coran's current attached garage with bonus room run underground and come out just feet from our property line. Water from those drain, drains flows onto our property, and are all photos attached. The proposed new structure would only be 60, 6 feet from our property line. With backfill, further encroachment will be taken and additional water drainage. Mr. Coran has a space to the left of his house where there's already existing parking area where his daughter and son-in-law, whom live at this address with their three children, have their camper, a truck, and a hot dog wagon parked. There is more than enough space to build another garage. Having been in touch with the previous owner, we know that the current structure was built to the limits for the zoning, for the structure, septic, et cetera. Also, there are no grounds for hardship in this, for this variance, as there are other options. Again, with respect, we are against the granting of this variance. Law is a place for a reason, and we hope the zoning board takes this into consideration." And there are two pictures here, uh, of the, the leaders, the water running onto the Tierney's property. The second letter, email was received, uh, today. "My name is John Georges. I live at 6 McGrath Terrace Extension, Fishkill, New York, across the road from 53 McGrath, David Coran's property. I agree with the building inspectors that this is a violation of Town Code 157, 150-37B. The 25-foot rule should remain in effect. I hope you take my decision into consideration of said affected property seeking relief. Thank you, John Georges." Okay. Okay, Mr. Coran.
All right, I just wrote up a little statement here that I'd like to address. I would like to address the letter sent to the Town of Fishkill Zoning Board of Appeals dated February 8th, 2022, from Peggy and Charles Tierney. Peggy and Charles Tierney are lot owners number six on Langdon map, uh, number 3852 with the Town of Fishkill County Duchess, known as 5 McGrath Terrace Extension. Their property is the abutting property in which I am seeking the area variance. Their house is set back hundreds of feet from my house. The area variance in which I'm filing for is not near their main parcel of property, but a second portion of land in which they purchased at a later date, believed to be 1995. And that was that section that was talked about in the, uh, application, uh, meeting, where it goes up on a diagonal to the point right up to the top. This second portion of land abuts up to Lot 7, which is the roadway and my parcel of land. It is a small triangular piece of property. This is a perfect example of why the Town of Fishkill Zoning Board has an application for an area variance. I've been paying the taxes in the Town of Fishkill for over 30 years. I've been at 53 McGrath Terrace for over 26 years. All pro, all projects on my property has only added value to the surrounding neighbors. With that said, let me answer a few concerns the Tierneys have. First, I would like to bring to attention the picture of the front leader drains. So you guys got the copy of the front leader drain there? The previous owner, back in the mid-'90s, ran a drain line under the driveway from the opposite side of the house, draining where you see the orange cone. All right, if it's not in color, it's the cone there. Uh, this is coming from the garage roof gutter on the house entrance side, so it's on the opposite side of what you're seeing on the picture. This will be eliminated by disconnecting the leader drain to the underground piping. The water will drain into my landscaping on that side. Second, we'll address the rear leader drain in the picture number two. Once again, the previous owner drained this leader into an underground pipe. Again, this will be disconnected and removed. Talking with my builder and engineer, all new leading, leader pipes and drainage will be diverted to my property only. This will eliminate any rainwater coming from my roofs going into the Tierneys property. The town building inspector can verify this at the conclusion of the proposed build. Lastly, the Tierneys are suggesting that I build a garage on my second driveway where they, where they listed multiple items. This will defeat the purpose of the proposed addition, as I am not just looking to build a garage, but I'm also requesting a bonus room and a storage room above. There will be access from my existing home into the bonus and storage area. This cannot be done with that, with the Tierney's suggestion of the second driveway. I hope this answers any questions the zoning board of appeals may have with the letter they received from the Tierneys. Sincerely, Mr. Coran." And as far as the second letter from, uh, John George, I don't have a comment on that. That's just a basic, uh, request on his part. That's what the, uh, application for area variance is all about.
I have one question. Could you, could you show me, or could somebody show me where their house is in relation to?
You can't see it.
You can't really see?
No, their house is...
I mean, it's, it's actually off.
It's, yeah, that's, that's my, that's my map.
I mean, is it like beyond the back of your property line? I mean, it...
If you look, roadway comes down, I mean, cuts around. This is the extra parcel that they, they purchased.
Okay.
When it goes all the way down, they hear their house is set back.
Okay. I mean, I drove, I drove over there last week and I took a look at it, and, you know, I could kinda see where the house was, but I wasn't sure where it was on the map there. Thank you.
It's just that trying to resection, that's the question.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Coran? Uh, we'll take comments from the floor. Anybody has any? Thank you, Mr. Coran.
Thank you.
Can you give the public hearing conduct rules, please?
I think they're up there, Dave.
No, actually, it's for the cable.
Oh, right here? Oh, right there.
Thank you.
Of course, there's always rules and laws. Verbal interruption, shouting, or other outbursts, as well, as well as slanderous, obscene language, or signs with a body or face are prohibited. Speaks are limited to one intern at the microphone and podium. Speakers are limited to three to four minutes at the microphone and podium. Speakers should provide only new or different information or commentary. Repetitive comments made previously at prior meetings are prohibited. Comments are limited to matters involving the business before the Board of the particular application. Speakers are asked to come to the podium, identify themselves, so that their name can maybe entered into the record. If a person continues to interrupt after the chairman has asked him to stop, they'll be asked to leave. Anybody have any questions? Okay.
Hi, Peggy Tierney, 5 McGrath Terrace Extension, property abutting, where they're questioning to do the, um, new structure. So our corner piece of property, where Mr. Coran said we bought after, we did in fact buy after we purchased our house in 1993. It was a title search error that wasn't included with our property, because that piece of property includes our driveway. So whoever our title search company was, they messed up and didn't include that piece with our property. Originally, that piece of property was owned by Central Hudson, and it had a name of Birch Road. It was, at one point back in the day, granted to them for access to come back for the telephone, phone lines, electric, and et cetera, back there. As to the way the property line is set with that corner piece like that, what you can't see on that map there is to the left of that corner is the 50-foot right away that grants access to the, to our five homes, to the five homes that are in that back area back there. Our house is set back, but I wouldn't say it's set way in the back. We have perfect view of, you know, our front yard and obviously their backyard. We have perfect view of all that. With that having been said, um, this house, we knew the owner, the previous owner, Al Rabasco, who built the house. It was built in 1994. My husband actually helped build the house. So we do know that the owner, that he bought the property from Bob Stobo, had to submit plans three times to the Board of Health in order to get that house fit just right. We know that it was set for just a three-bedroom home, because they weren't able to get the well and the septic Board of Health approved. So basically, we have not spoken with our neighbor about this. If, um, you know, we had concerns, we weren't talked to about having a variance put through. The leader drains, it would have been nice to have known that he was considering doing what he's doing about that. But we just feel that it's a big structure, and maybe he feels it's not interfering with our property, but we can still see, we see, we have full access to seeing into their backyard. And we just feel like another big structure there is just, we don't want to see it, that's all. And it's, there's no disrespect to anybody involved, but 6 feet coming back in the back end, and there's almost 11 feet in the front, which would be access. There's still gonna be foot traffic back there, there's still gonna be the backfill. Yes, the actual structure might just be 6 feet, but everybody knows that there's going to be some type of backfill that's gonna come in, and it's just gonna encroach even further over. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
And everybody's free to come and take a look. I mean, it, that, like I said, that, that corner piece of property is, we own the, the road, that's, it's a private lane, so we do own that back there as well, and it is part of that road.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Do you have your hand up, sir?
John Whacker Jr. When I got the letter in the mail and was looking at it, if I was an adjacent property owner, I would be against this as well. The 25-foot rule is in there for a reason, and I think it should be upheld. You know, if it was a couple of feet, that's one thing, but to go double digits into the encroachment area, to me, is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Marco Peraticos, Booth Boulevard. Just a couple of things that I'd like to see addressed before the public hearing is closed or any decisions are made. Generally, a variance for, such as this, they'll usually go 50%, and that's about what you guys have done in previous, uh, zoning appeals. Going 80% with the variances is, is pretty extreme. So if, I was looking at his, um, application for the variance, and, um, on here, it says there's no undesirable changes to nearby properties, but there is a visual impact, and they've already removed all the trees from that property line in the last couple of weeks, which makes the visual impact even greater. There is alternate locations in here, 'cause they said this is the only place they can put it. Question three, um, they addressed the area variance is not substantial. Generally, anything over 50% of the variance is considered, you know, substantial. And here, you're looking at 80% of the variance down to 6 feet, which is really almost unheard of when you're talking about a variance for a project like this. Only other thing I saw is, if you look at this right here, it doesn't show the wetland buffer, 'cause there is a wetland on the back of this property and a 100-foot buffer. If you look at, I think it was Alpha Zero, it's labeled, it's got the plans here, it shows the existing house, it shows the, um, the proposed addition, it shows the wetland buffer, but it doesn't show the outbuildings. So if you're to overlay these, these outbuildings are actually in the wetland buffer right now. So I went back and I looked at the, um, all the variances and the, um, everything that was granted on this property, and there was nothing saying that that was gonna be in a wetland buffer, and there was nothing given to put these, uh, outbuildings on the wetland buffer. And I think only, there's about three outbuildings there, and only two of them were permitted. It looks like one, it, it's hard to tell without going out there and measuring it, 'cause there's, none of these plans show the wetland buffer and the outbuildings, which they should. That, and also the drainage plans that they were talking about, that drainage should be listed on the plans, and it's not, when I looked at them. That's about the only things I see that should be addressed before this public hearing is closed or any decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so what, what was your last name?
Peraticos.
Mr. Coran, I got a couple more questions here. You're taking up a lot of room here with the, uh, when you're, when you're putting that structure up, that's a lot less, uh, absorption. You're, you're creating another issue, especially on a wetland, you know? 'Cause I, I am aware of how the wetlands creep up there, you know?
Yeah, the wetlands are in the back, this would be off to the side.
Right, right. And I also am aware that the property, you know, adjacent to you is a lower part, is lower than yours. And my question is, how are you going to prevent the water from encroaching on your neighbor's property?
Well, first of all...
You know, we gotta, we gotta see those plans. We, we have to see that.
All right, first of all, we're talking about a, a gutter coming off the side of the house, 'cause it's just, it's just a gutter coming off the garage. So that could be directed towards the front, it could be put into a dry well, it's clean water, doesn't necessarily have to be going on to their property whatsoever. So that, like I said, that, that's gonna be done at the end, you know? When you, when you have drawings and everything like that for building, you don't show gutters and stuff, right? It's the structural building.
Well, when you're asking for a variance, yeah, you do. We, we, we would want that information. The other question I have is, you've got nearly an acre and a half on the other side, and there's a plenty, there's plenty of room on there, you know? I, I'm just wondering why you can't put this on the other side?
The answer to that is, I need the space above, and it needs to be attached to the house for a bonus room.
I think he said they're tying that bonus room in, into the house.
It's being tied directly in.
To access the house.
And you can't do that from the other side?
No. Now, when you come across McGrath Terrace, you actually come across an easement, right? And that easement is my property in front of my house, which grants all my neighbors here their access to their home. All right? With, with the, with the easement, it's a 20-foot easement. And that's the same thing with the side road there. It's a 20-foot easement that comes down. You know, it might be listed as 50 feet, but the road is actually 20 feet wide. So that structure there would be about 45 feet to the edge of the road. So it's, it's not, it's, we're, like I said, we're talking about a small piece of property. It's not budding up to any main portion of their home, and that's why, you know, that's why I'm calling for the, the variance. There was a house down back that was built a few years ago that actually got a variance, because these are zoned one-acre lots, and he was a three-quarter acre lot. And when the house went up, it went up right next to the neighbor that lived there. Now that, I would have considered a, a big issue as far as variances. He, he built it basically right on top of the other house. This is, this is far away from everybody's houses, and as far as cutting trees down, that's, that's my business on my property.
Ron, did you go out, did you go out and look at it?
I'm sorry?
Did you go out and look at this?
Yeah.
Oh, you did? Okay, because it, it looks a lot different than it does on the plan.
I'm sorry?
It looks different than it does on the plan. I mean, you don't, you get a full perspective when you go out there and look at it.
And the creek is right back there, too.
Huh?
The creek is right back there, too.
Creek is in the back, yeah.
Yeah.
Creek is hundreds, hundreds of feet in the back.
But that's why you got the wetlands, because when the creek gets high...
Correct. Oh, yeah, it, it overflows.
I've just got a question on the dimensions. Something's not clear to me. On the application, you've got the side setback in the front, I think, as 6 foot, 3 inches. I'm sorry, in the back, it's 6 foot, 3 inches. But on this new survey, it looks like it says 7 foot, 3 inches. And then on the front, uh, I think the application has 10 foot, 11 inches, but on the new survey, it has 11 foot, 6 inches. Am I reading that right? And if I am, which, which one is the accurate one?
The, uh, the, the first survey that you were talking about, or the original survey, was the one with the, uh, the 6-foot setbacks. This survey here I just had done last month.
In January?
Yeah. And this is, this is what they came up with. The other, the other survey, I think, was done in 1994.
Right, so the proposed addition is actually slightly farther away from the property line than what your application showed. It's not slightly closer, am I right on that?
Correct.
Okay. About a foot in each, on each measurement, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I'm just not clear, the, the addition, it's, it's a garage in the front, it's a single-car garage or a two-car garage?
It's, it's gonna be, uh, it's 20 feet wide, so it's gonna be one, one garage door, one large garage door, and it's 38 feet deep. It's actually set back off the front of the house. 'Cause the front of that, that, that you're seeing there sticking out, that's actually the, the original garage on the house. It's a two-car garage. So I'm looking to come back about 10 feet and then start the addition, so it doesn't sit right up front.
So you've got, so the addition would be a two-car garage with one door, but it fits, wide enough to fit two?
Correct.
And then the existing spot where the driveway is shown coming in, that's presently used as a two-car garage, or it's been converted to living space or something?
No, that's just a two-car garage.
Okay.
It's just space.
And that's gonna be eliminated, or that's gonna be kept as a two-car garage?
No, that's gonna be kept.
And then there's another garage over on the other side of the property. Is that in use, or? And again, just, just in terms of helping guide the, uh, the Board, the reason I'm asking these questions is just to, uh, kinda get to one of the factors, is, you know, the benefit to the applicant, what are you seeking to accomplish? Why do you need, um, two new garage spaces in addition to the two in the house and the two over on the other side of the property?
It's for storage of vehicles and, and tractors and stuff like that, and then the storage above would be for my grandchildren who are living with me.
22 by 38 foot storage for your grandchildren?
No, the room above, he said it's for his grandchildren.
Am I getting that right?
He said the room above is for his grandchildren.
Right.
Not the garage.
Now, I'm wondering if there's some way we can cut it down to one variant instead of two? You know, if we, if it was smaller, I mean, I'm trying to understand the...
I'm looking for the space up, up above.
I guess...
'Cause right now, I have two bedrooms upstairs, so I'm looking for some room for the kids to play.
And there's no way you can put it on the other side?
No, you, you actually went out to the property.
Yeah.
On the other side, you'd be buttoned right up against the pool. And there's no, there's no access. I'm trying to access off my main driveway there, so I could just access right into it. I have a couple collector cars that I'd like to move over into that garage.
And you can't move, you can't move air to the back, over the deck, or anything like that?
No, 'cause that's, that's running, that's running towards the, uh, septic, and, uh, then I have a patio block on the, on the bottom there. There's a sunken terrace that if you're in the back of the house, that leads downstairs.
And there's no, when I'm asking, there's no way you can put this bonus room over those?
I, I don't, I don't foresee it, no. This would set the whole house up to be, you know, standardized, because right now, you got a garage in the front of the house, and the house is off to the, to the right. This would add, you know-
And that circular structure, that's the pool?
Yes.
And you say this, this other structure was on the back, it was on the other side, it would be too close to the pool, or?
Well, yeah, I got Velco doors there that go down to my basement, so I would lose access to that. And there's, there's really not a lot of lawn there.
So again, just to give the board some guidance, it sounds like what you're, what you're interested in your inquiry right now is, one of the factors is the availability of feasible alternatives-
Right.
And the idea that you're duty-bound to grant the minimum variance required to provide the benefit sought, so, you know, really what are you asking, is there, are there any alternatives? In terms of location, it seems like that's what you're exhausting right now, but also in terms of reduction, oftentimes it's a valid inquiry to ask, you know, could there be reduction, a reduction in the, in the, in the addition sought in order to lessen the amount of variances? Or some other tweak to the plans that could still achieve the benefit, or part of the benefit?
I would say the way the roof line is on that house, to shrink that, you would gain no upstairs, you know, moon space. Just the way the roof line is, that's why, that's why I needed to come out as far as I did, to give them some space up there. Because if you only come out 10 feet, you're not gaining any, any, any room in there, up, up there at all, the way the roof line is and everything like that. Because there's three different tiers. So I was looking for the space above.
What's the total square footage on the, in the house presently, and then how much square footage of living space are you looking to add?
I, it's approximately 2,300 square feet, and you're, you're looking at maybe another, what, 20, it's not even going to be 20 by 30, so that's 600, probably, I would say, around 400 square feet? Just because of the, you know, the angle of the roof and everything.
About 850 square feet. And there's no other way you can, you know, revise this?
I really, I really don't see another way.
Is there any kind of vegetative screening, or are you proposing any vegetative screening along that property line between the new addition and, you know, the sightline of the Tierney's home?
On that little triangular piece?
Yeah, yeah, along there, or, I mean, Ms. Tierney wants to put a vegetable garden in or something like that, is this going to approach on that, is this going to impact that? She can do what she wants.
Not, not if I'm draining everything the other way, there should be no, no issues.
I mean, in terms of a visual screen, that's, you know-
No.
Are you willing to put something up to mitigate? She was concerned about her view. Are you willing to do something to mitigate?
Sure.
Okay. And you also said-
I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking to put a fence in the back.
As Ronnie mentioned.
Yeah, I'm looking to put up a fence in the back also to eliminate some of the-
Are you sure you can put a dry well in there to mitigate the drainage?
That's what my engineer said, yes.
Like Ron said, it needs to be put on the map there.
What's the height of that proposed addition in its closest point to the property line?
The height? It's a little over 20 feet, I think. I think the 20, it's a 20-foot peak.
And so, so it comes out on a, on a, on an angle, and then the, once it reaches the wall, what's the height of the wall before the-
Where it comes down-
The side of the house, where the roof comes down to the side of the house, approximately?
It's about 12 feet.
I would very much like you to reassess what were our concerns. I would like very much for you to do that, and the concerns of what people have brought forward. You know, if you're willing to do that, I'll extend the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, but if you want to stick to this, we'll take a vote now.
Yeah, I'd kind of like to see a dry well, see a PE stamp on it, that says it's big enough to mitigate the drainage.
Okay.
But I also, you know-
And I would like to see you come up with maybe something to, to meet your neighbor, so she does help review.
I think we also need to, if you want to pursue this, you have to take in the concerns of the neighbors, and, you know, reassess this, okay? I would try very hard to put it on the other side, okay? You know, but-
So Ron, I think that question's been asked and answered. He's looked into that, and he can't put it on the other side. I mean, he may be, the bonus room's going to go into a bathroom on the other side. It doesn't work on the other side.
I hear you.
Okay. To, you know, to ask him to, like, totally change his whole plan, is kind of crazy, you know? He's here asking for a little bit of relief, which, granted, you know, if maybe we could look at some, some buffering to make the neighbors a little bit happier, so they don't have to see it, you know? The mitigation of the drains, you know, I think those two things are, are kind of big, and would help the situation.
But it's also the size of the variance, too.
The size of what?
The size of variance, he, it's an 80% variance. So if we, and the thing is, and one of the things that we have to deal with, where the variance is large, as, as the gentleman pointed out, it sets a precedent, and, you know, that's a problem for us in the future. So that has to be taken into consideration, you know, when you come back, okay?
Understood.
All right, so we're going to extend the public hearing?
So what are, what are we looking to have him bring back to us, just so, so I know? What you're asking for?
I think what I'm looking for would be some, something to mitigate, to, to help the neighbor with the view, and I would like to make sure that there was a, a dry well that was functional, that could handle all that drainage, the size of it.
So basically, a plan for the drain, which makes sense.
Yeah, because there's two concerns here, I heard. The drainage, and I heard the visibility problem.
And what?
And the visibility problem.
The visibility, right, well, except maybe, maybe a buffer or some kind of landscaping.
Yeah, I see two problems.
Yeah, okay.
A drainage and a visibility problem.
The drainage and the visibility?
And there have been, there have been variances this year large in the past. Some have been turned down, and some have been accepted, so it's just, it's just, just for a particular case.
I understand.
I mean, we have to take into the resident's concerns, obviously, as well as, Mr. Corrin is a resident, trying to improve his property. So we have to take that into consideration.
Absolutely. And I'm, I'm more for that, but we also have concerns from three of your neighbors.
Right.
Okay, and we have to, we have to take that into consideration, too. So I'm asking you if you can assess, reassess this, okay? Consider the comments that were made here tonight, and come back to us and, you know, hopefully you address those concerns.
Okay.
Okay? Fair enough? Ms. Tierney? Thank you, Mr. Corrin.
Just really quick, if, you know, he's going to come back with other things about the drainage, so he said he's going to bring it into the front, so just quick, if you're bringing it into the front, we, you know, he does own that road right in front, he gives us easement to get back there, just, we need to make sure now it doesn't run down, because the current structures that are there, blocks, there's no weep drains in the walls that are there. So the water now does run down, and it does run into our private lane back there. And yes, it may only be 20 feet, but all of our neighbors know it should be 50 feet, and if we were ever, say, to turn it over to the town, which we have to make improvements to do that, we would have to make it 50-foot. But we're private back there, so we all take care of it, we're good with it at 20 feet right now. Also, garage, will there be a driveway there? Because you see it's elevated, so is it going to, is there going to be runoff? Is he doing an additional driveway to that? Just questions.
Yeah, those are things we'll be looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, that's an interesting, I hadn't thought of that, I hadn't noticed that, that there's not a driveway that's proposed to get to the new garage? And I see one of the things that you had addressed was the lot coverage. So it looks like you have maximum lot coverage of 12% now. It looks like prior to the proposal, you're showing 10%, and with the proposal, you're bringing it up to 11%. Is there, I guess, one of the questions is, is there, sorry, there you are. Are you planning to put a driveway in, and if so, I'm not sure what type, and I'm not sure under the Fishkill code, what counts towards lot development coverage or not? If it's, if it's gravel, does that count? I think many codes will count gravel as a compacted surface. Can you just speak to that, and see whether that's going to be a concern with lot coverage?
Sure. No, I will, I will, I'll get with my surveyor on that. So I will address, you know, concerns with my engineer, and then also the surveyor, as far as, as far as the lot coverage.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, so if you're, what is the next deadline? It would, it would seem to me that the, with the next step, the next procedural step, it sounds like the board is looking to keep the public hearing open.
Yeah.
You would, the next meeting is March 10th, so there will be a-
One second, I'll get you the deadline.
What's that?
I'll get you the deadline.
Yeah, so March 10th would be the next meeting date, and the deadline for submittal would be?
Give me one second.
I can't, I can't make that, so one of you guys are going to have to chair that meeting.
Remember what I told you.
So I cannot make the March 10th meeting, so you might be here.
Okay.
Okay.
You want me to say?
So if, if we end up with four, with three members present, and if it's-
Actually, the next meeting is March 15th, and the deadline is February 22nd.
Okay.
March 15th, February 22nd. Yeah, March 15th, yeah. I can make that one.
You can, or you're going to?
Yeah, I'll be here.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, so the deadline, the submittal deadline was-
22, for 3:15.
What'd you say?
February 22nd.
Oh, 2:22.
Yep.
Okay, so that's a little bit, did you get that, Mr. Corrin? That's kind of around the corner, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, look, I guess the, a good question would be, if you think there's a reasonable likelihood that you're not going to get it done in the next week, it might be that what you do is you adjourn the hearing over to the April meeting, to make sure that he's going to have time. If you think you're going to make it, then it would be reasonable to keep it as, as March 15th. Do you have a feel for that?
I feel fine.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So March, March 15th will be the next public hearing for this.
Make a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Steven Civitello, application ZB22-002, tax parcel 6356-1-064778, 45 Lake Road, it's R40 zoning district, acreage is .28. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Applicant seeks the following area variance for the purpose of legalizing the construction of a 12-by-16-foot shed. The right-side setback variance, seven feet, where 10-foot is the minimum setback requirement in the R40 zoning district. Said variance would result in a three-foot right-side setback. Said variance in violation of Town and Fishkill 150, attachment 1.5 note, see schedule of regulations regarding these districts. Okay, Mr. Civitello, can you?
Not yet, we got, let's, make, yeah, we haven't opened the public hearing, so we, assuming all the postings and mailings have been completed, everything is copacetic, you can entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I should read this, she puts a lot of work into this. I should get here earlier and pre-read it. Okay, can we have a motion for a public hearing for this application?
Make a motion. Public carry.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so do we have any, any memos, or emails, or notes, or anything for this application? And it doesn't seem to be anybody else in attendance. So would you like to make your presentation, sir?
Um, sure, nothing's-
Hold on a second.
It's up too high.
This is existing, just so you know.
Yeah, it's up, can you lower it a little bit? There we go, yeah. Thank you. Okay.
There was a shed, it was falling apart, I tore it down, and I put it, and it went up. I guess, I didn't know, I mean, put, what was there, same spot, I didn't move anything, I didn't know there was a, you know, variance needed.
Now, was that shed there when you bought the property?
Yes.
Okay.
It was there, it was falling apart.
I think we asked a lot of these questions.
Yeah, it was falling apart.
Is this bigger than the original shed? Is this bigger than the original shed?
It's the same size, same spot, everything's the same.
Yeah, I drove by there, and it looked like it was up against the fence, and, you know, but it's a high fence.
Yeah, the, the neighbor's side's a high fence, I got trees on the street side, I mean, you can't really see it.
Yeah.
Just put a shed for storage, I didn't do anything different.
Well, I have no more questions.
What, when, you, your purchase of the house was when?
Um, about- 13, 2013.
And there was no permit for this previously, for this shed?
They don't show it on there, no. Like I said, we had had an issue, and I found out that, you know, there were notes that somebody complained about chickens years and years and years ago, so they obviously knew something was there, but, I mean, they're even showing a, someone, there was even a fence-
Yeah.
Up there, which wasn't there when I purchased the house either, so.
So do you have any feel for when that thing was originally built, or how long it had been there before you purchased it?
No, no.
I mean, it looked old by the time you purchased it.
Yeah, it was old, it was just, you know, it was semi-useable when I moved in, but just over time, it's just got worse. And then last year, the neighbors, there were like two huge trees on the other side, they cut those down, and that seemed to help deteriorate things quicker, so, you know, rather than having a hazard, I knocked it down, I just wanted to put something else up. And now you can see blue skies behind the shed, which is nice. Those trees were huge, and ominous, and dangerous looking, but they took care of that last year. So it's just a shed, I have no electricity, I have nothing out there, it's just for storage. You know, just nothing huger than anybody else's shed, you can't see it from the street, you really can't see it from, you know, anywhere because of the high fence, and I kind of improved it, or improved the situation anyhow.
You have a fence along that side that it's closest to, that, that-
Yeah, the whole property is fenced.
Whole thing?
Yeah.
Now, is that your fence, the whole property, or is it the neighbor's? Now, is that your fence, the whole property, or is it the neighbor's?
Um, the fence behind the shed is the neighbor's, but I'm actually, it's falling apart, and I was actually, we got new, the other neighbor bought the house, and I was actually thinking about fixing the fence in my backyard, so if I do that, I was going to ask him if, you know, he had any objection to me changing that fence or fixing that fence as well, since it is, it's like leaning into my yard. So I was just thinking about fixing it.
Clarify something for me. So there was a shed there originally, right?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, you might.
Oh, there was a shed there originally, right?
There was a shed, yeah, when I purchased that.
So what'd you do? You took it down?
Yeah, it was falling apart. Basically, I just moved, you know.
So why does the new shed got to be on the line?
Well, it's just...
Well, I can't move it, because...
You know, I hear what you're saying.
Now's the time you can legalize it, right?
Good point.
Or is, is it already the new shed built?
It's up.
It's built, and it's...
Okay, so I'm getting clear now. So we thought you didn't need it, so then you found out you needed a permit, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I didn't change anything.
Okay, now I'm a little clearer. It's getting late, I should be in bed.
Me too.
It's after four.
Okay, but thank you. I was wondering why, maybe I'll test the question, so you, so you put it back up without getting it?
Yeah, after you put it up, you realized it's somebody...
So now you would have to knock it down. How about your neighbor? What's he got, what's his opinion of it?
Uh, nobody's had any problems with it.
Have you talked to him?
Um, well, it's the new guy. The, the lady that was there, she just had, they had to move her to a nursing home. So the, the neighbor on the other side just purchased this house, and I don't know if he's going to rent it or sell it, but I can't move the shed because I have a sidewalk in the back.
I was just wondering what the, what's over on the other side.
Um, because you can't even see it. So it's, you know, it's not a low fence, it's a probably seven, eight foot tall fence, so.
So there's a rock in the way, like a, what, like a big, like a boulder that's in the way next to the, you couldn't move it even if you wanted to?
Well, I've got, the septic is back there. There's a sidewalk in between.
Septic, oh, that's, oh, sidewalk. I think you said a rock.
Well, no, it's the garage, there's a sidewalk, and then I have my septic, so I really can't move it.
I'll tell you a story about this. My neighbor did that to me once. I made him move it.
There's nobody here to complain about it.
Yeah, we stepped out a little, so they have, they've got a concrete set.
Yeah, yeah. I, I have no more questions.
No, I see.
Tim?
I asked all my questions last time.
Isabel?
No.
I think we're, I think we're ready to hear, hear the five questions that we got to answer, right? Are we ready to make a motion on this?
So first, we see there's nobody here, but we can open it up to the public. Anybody from the public want to be heard in this application? Hearing no one. I mean, no further comments from the board, questions from the board. You could entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
All right. I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing for this application. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Then it would be appropriate for you to consider the, if you want to consider voting tonight, you should consider the balancing test with the five factors. I think you have them all in front of you there. If you don't, I can step you through them as well.
I think we...
Or I could step you through them anyway.
Would you like to take a vote tonight? I think we could take a vote tonight.
Yeah, that's, that's...
So, as you know, it's a, your decision is guided by a balancing test, weighing the benefits to the applicant. The variance is granted against the detriments, if any, to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And in thinking about that balancing test, you're to look at five factors. The first is whether the granting of the area variance, area variance will result in an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. Anybody feel like there will be any kind of detriment or change to the character of the neighborhood or nearby properties by reason of this?
I don't think so.
No.
Next is whether there's a feasible alternative to achieve the same benefit other than through an area variance.
Not at this point, it's already built.
Yeah. And it was just a replacement shed, you know, if I, I'm speculating, the other one was unsafe.
Oh, yeah. It was definitely dangerous.
Yeah.
I can't use it at all.
The next factor is whether the requested area variance is substantial?
Well, three feet.
It is, 70, 70%, if you want, if you look at it that way, but... Not saying I have a problem with that.
To me, it might be substantial, but I don't think it's impactful.
Okay. Number four is whether there will be an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district.
I don't think so. How long has it been here now?
This one?
Yeah.
Couple of months.
Couple of months?
For what I put back up, yeah. But what was there is...
Couple of years.
Yeah, well, I was moving in 13, so it's been there.
All right.
Nine years. Well, nine that I saw.
I don't think so.
And then the last factor is whether the, the alleged difficulty was self-created, which in an area variance is not, it's relevant, but it's not determinative.
Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, it was, he inherited this.
Can I ask one more question before we vote?
Sure.
You own the fence, right? So you own the fence, right?
Uh, the side one, no. I'm...
Huh?
The side one, I don't own that, but I'm going to ask the, the new owner, you know, if he would mind if I replaced it, because it is falling apart.
Okay.
Which I probably would have done with the old owner, but she's no longer living there. And the only exposure that I see is somebody took the fence, took the fence down later, and then comes up and says, you know, I don't like the looks of it, but that's all.
Okay. I don't think anybody has any problems with any of these things.
Nah, somebody knew by now.
No, I have no problem.
All right, so then it would seem to be, are there any conditions? It seems like you're all headed towards a grant of the variance under the circumstances. Are there any conditions that, you know, any of you would like to place on the, or you think, you'd like to discuss on the granting of a variance?
Well, he doesn't own the fence, but...
Yeah, the fence would have been the one...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of.
Yeah.
Now, when the water drains off of this, does it go into the neighbor's property?
No.
No, it's, it's coming off the sides.
Yeah.
It's all right.
I don't have a problem with this.
No, no, just a general question before we do vote on this. You're saying that there's going to be a new, there's a new owner behind, or there's going to be a new owner behind?
It's actually next door.
Are we, are we liable in any respect for somebody, somebody buys the property that you're joining them, and they come in and say, wow, that shed's too close to the property. I don't like it.
No, the, whoever the current owner is of the property would have gotten notice of this application and would have had a fair opportunity to be here and voice their concerns. And once, you know, if you grant it, once it's granted, it runs with the land, it's there, it's attached to the property.
You're buying that property, you know that shed's there, and you don't buy the property.
It's a case of speak now or forever hold your peace.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And this one to all the neighbors within 500 feet, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So even the other neighbor that bought the property?
Oh, yeah. He was on the list.
That's true, too, right. Good point, yeah. So if there's no conditions and you're looking to, seems like you're headed towards a grant, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to grant the variance sought and to authorize me to prepare a resolution and submit same to the chairman for his signature and authorize him to sign.
All right.
You could do it all in one, or you could do it in two.
Should we entertain a motion to accept?
I may make a motion to accept.
To, to grant the variance assault?
To grant, to grant the variance.
Right.
All right, I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Congratulations.
Thank you.
And David, would you...
Now you're legal.
Do we have to entertain a motion?
Yeah, so if you could make a motion to authorize me to prepare a resolution and to, or actually to direct me to prepare a resolution and to authorize the chairman to sign it if it's consistent with what went on here tonight.
All right, entertain a motion to do whatever David said he has to do.
Make a motion.
Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, David, do your thing.
I shall.
All right. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
You got it.
Second.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Motion carried.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I might come back just to hang out with you guys.
Okay.
Mike Korshey, we'll be looking for beers, just so you know.
If you start coming to hang, just hang out at zoning board meetings, we're going to have to send you to a mental institution.
My better place is to hang out than here.
Yeah.